Good evening Costa Mesa and welcome to the regular meeting of the Costa Mesa City Council and successor agency to the redevelopment agency for Tuesday, April 7th, 2020. At this time, we will be leading our council meeting Californically. And I'm going to read a brief statement into the record to let everyone know what's happening. In order to minimize the spread of the COVID-19 virus, Governor Newsom has issued executive orders that temporarily suspend requirements of the Brown Act. And as such, the Costa Mesa City Council chambers are closed to the public until further notice. All of the Costa Mesa City Council members, the city attorney, and the city manager, as well as other staff, are attending this meeting Californically. Members of the public can view the city council meetings live on Costa Mesa TV, Spectrum Channel 3, and AT&amp;T U-verse Channel 99, as well as online at youtube.com/CostaMesaTV. Members of the public who wish to make a comment on a specific agenda item, please submit your comment via email to thecityclerk@costamessasc.gov. Comments will be accepted continuously during the meeting, and we will read into the record up to the time limit of three minutes. Any portion of the comment not read aloud due to time restrictions will still be included in the record. In compliance with the Americans with Disabilities Act of 1990, if you need special assistance to participate in this meeting, please contact the city clerk at 714-754-5225. In general, notification at least 48 hours prior to the meeting will enable the city to make reasonable arrangements to ensure accessibility to this meeting. Language translation services are also available for this meeting by calling 714-754-5225 at least 48 hours in advance. City of Costa Mesa thanks you in advance for taking all precautions to prevent spreading the COVID-19 virus. And so, at this time, I will ask everyone to join, and we will play the National Anthem and then the Pledge of Allegiance. Okay, please stay with me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the Republic of the United States of America.
Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and thank you for that rendition. We are the home of the brave these days, that's for sure. Thank you, Alissa Franklin, for giving our city of the arts a little bit of art for our meeting. Ms. Green, can you please call it all by voice, roll call?
Councilmember Chavez?
Here.
Councilmember Guinness?
Here.
Councilmember Mansour?
Here.
Councilmember Marr?
Here.
Councilmember Reynolds?
Here.
Mayor Protem Stevens?
There.
Mayor Foley?
Present.
Okay. Okay, City Attorney Barlow, do we have any reports from the closed session?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Items 1 and 2, we received direction. Items 3, 4, 5, and 6 are going to be rescheduled for consideration at another time. And on Item 7, we received directions. No reportable action was taken in closed session.
Thank you. Before we give our presentation, for transparency purposes and so that the public who is listening can know who is on our call, other than the city council member, could we please have a voice announcement of who's on the call?
Loriann Farrell Harrison?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Loriann Farrell Harrison, City Manager.
Fire Chief Dan Sono.
Calling last chief, please.
Jason Dempsey, Emergency Services Administrator.
Is anyone else on the call?
Barry Curtis, Director of Development Services.
DVE IT Director.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you for that, and thanks for the public, thanks for your patience as we got started a little bit late tonight. We have two presentations tonight. The first will be from Ms. Farrell Harrison with an update on our Costa Mesa Bridge and Shelter and homelessness update. Ms. Farrell Harrison?
Thank you, Mayor Foley. Actually, I think this update will be provided by Assistant City Manager Susan Price.
Oh, thank you, Ms. Price. Please continue.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. It's my pleasure to provide you an update on how things are going in the city of Costa Mesa with regards to our homeless population during the COVID-19 crisis. Happy to say that things are stable at the Bridge Shelter with a current census of 28 participants. We have been placing our seniors and people with chronic health conditions into motels for their preventative measures and to make sure that they were not in contact with other people in the shelter during this time, and so that we could achieve the social distancing as prescribed by the Public Health Department. And so, to date, that's been working very well. We've had two of our clients tested due to having flu-like symptoms. Both have tested negative, and so things are going well. We also are working with our partners in addressing the needs of those that are unsheltered in our city, and we have 26 people that we are currently working with that are electing not to enter the shelter, the winter shelter, or other programs that are available across the county. But we are still working with them in distributing hygiene products and providing them service and meals. I want to report that we are almost to the one-year mark of being at the Lighthouse Church. And to date, I'm happy to report that we have our housed numbers, the shelter has housed 52 people, and from the unsheltered population, 64. So, right now, our total housed number is 116. And even during this crisis of COVID-19, we have housed four people just in the last couple of weeks. And so, the team is tireless and dedicated to their efforts, and they've done an amazing job, not only of keeping the homeless population safe during this time, providing services in alternate locations such as the motel, and working with populations that might be out on the streets to make sure that our seniors and those with chronic health conditions have access to motel voucher and are being provided meals from some of our partners. Quick note on the county work, they just allocated half a million dollars to reimburse cities and shelter providers for motel vouchers. So, the efforts that our city has taken on for motelling is a reimbursable activity through the homeless funding available from the state on COVID-19. So, we will be submitting our first reimbursement this month. Additionally, the county is opening up some additional spaces at motels. You may have seen about this in the news in other cities regarding folks that are homeless that may test positive COVID-19 so that they can get 24/7 medical supervision in those locations, and that will be operated by Illumination Foundation. The Joplin Center will be available for seniors and disabled populations that have chronic health conditions, mostly for preventative efforts, the work that we've done in Costa Mesa that we started on March 17th. And so, those efforts are coming online shortly. Additionally, there are 78 RV trailers that are coming into the county, 39 of those to the city of Anaheim, 39 to Santa Ana, and Santa Ana's not going to be using all of those. And you may be aware that Costa Mesa put in a request for 10 of those trailers, and we haven't got confirmation yet that we will receive them, but it looks like we may. And so, we've entered discussions with the fairgrounds to potentially cite them there. And so, you may hear more about that in the coming week, probably seven to 10 days. We should be hearing whether the city of Costa Mesa will receive those trailers and whether we would be able to cite them at the fairgrounds across the street from City Hall. That's important to us because it's very close to the system of care that we are operating right now and working with people in motels, but we would use those trailers to further isolate those that are seniors and with chronic health conditions. Additionally, we've received some feedback from our community regarding the lease extension at the Lighthouse Church because we will be bringing forward the Airway property, which is our permanent location. We'll be bringing forward that for the construction project. But meanwhile, we need some additional time at the Lighthouse Church, and so we've reached out to the neighbors. We've received feedback from just a handful of them, but for the most part, the feedback has been very, very positive, and people have really seen the difference in the community with having Mercy House, operating that shelter. They've been a great neighbor. They've addressed the needs of the homeless population and, you know, really addressed the neighborhood concerns proactively. So, we're happy to see that. In fact, some of the feedback, people want the church to continue to operate the shelter there long-term because it's been a benefit for their communities. And so, I want to thank the people that provided that feedback. And then, we look forward to bringing forward, probably in late May, early June, the construction plans for the Airway property. And I know that people are concerned, and certainly we all are, about the economic impacts of COVID-19. But we are looking at some state homeless initiative money from the county. We put in a request before all of the COVID-19 impacts started to hit. We put in a request for $3 million for the construction project on Airway. We were the only city that did apply for that type of money in that allocation. And so, we look forward to working with the county on bringing some of that funding to bear as we build out our permanent structure. And finally, I just want to share a heartfelt thank you to Mercy House. You know, they operate the Bridge program here in Costa Mesa, but they operate five other shelters and the Armory in the county, and they're doing an amazing job in addressing some of the pressures and the dynamics related to COVID-19 and keeping our most vulnerable populations safe and virus-free. And I also want to thank, a shout-out to Trellis and Linda Miles from the Lighthouse Church for delivering food to our clients that are in the motel and bringing them treats that they know and love and request. So, that's been really fun to work with the clients in that way. And then, I want to thank the Crossing for their day program and for access to showers while all of our businesses are closed, and we've heard feedback about the gyms being closed, the Starbucks, and other resources that otherwise people would use during the day. The Crossing is filling that void in our city. And then, Share Ourselves and SOS for their outreach efforts in helping us to get hygiene supplies and products to people and make sure that they have access to medical care that they may need so that they don't end up having to go to an emergency room for something that is non-COVID-related. And I just want to thank everybody for their work, and our Costa Mesa staff and community-based teams working so well together and taking great care of our most vulnerable in Costa Mesa. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Price, for that excellent report. Up next is our COVID-19 update from our city manager, Ms. Farrell Harrison.
Thank you, Mayor Foley, and good evening, council. I wanted to give an update on our most recent COVID-19 activities and events helping us to deal with this challenging crisis here. So, one of the things that I wanted to highlight this evening for our public audience that's viewing is our work around the eviction moratorium. So, last week, we issued an emergency regulation that temporary halts rental evictions for residential and commercial tenants affected by the COVID-19 pandemic. As we all know, the recent closures of businesses, the furloughs that have resulted in the private sector, some layoffs as well, have placed a lot of Californians and Costa Masons in a position where they may not be able to afford their rental payments. We want to make sure that, as a city, we're doing everything that we can to be responsive and to protect our families as much as possible, not just from the direct impacts of the virus itself, but also the resulting economic impacts that have happened as a result of all of the things that we've had to put into place to reduce the spread. And so, as businesses have closed, and a lot of our businesses have experienced some layoffs, and throughout the state, there's a stay-at-home order. So, with the stay-at-home orders that we're seeing across the state, we're making sure that a lot of our families and residents can participate in the eviction moratorium for both the commercial sector and the residential sector, and so that we can provide a safety net for families in need during this time. So, under the moratorium, landlords are prohibited from initiating proceedings or otherwise taking steps to evict a tenant for non-payment of rent from any residential or commercial unit within the city of Costa Mesa. If a tenant is unable to pay rent, the tenant must demonstrate their inability to make the rent payment due to substantial financial impacts caused by COVID-19. The tenant must notify the landlord in writing within 30 days after the rent is due. And so, the ordinance can become effective April 1, which means that the notification would have to be made by the tenant to the landlord by April 30th. And so, our tenants have additional time even for this month's rental payment that was due on April 1st. So, they'd have to explain in writing the substantial COVID-19 financial impact that they've suffered and provide documentation of decreased income, or increased medical expenses, or any other financial impacts related to COVID-19, and submit that to their landlords. And landlords are encouraged to reach out to their tenants as well, proactively to open a dialogue regarding rental issues during these difficult times. And so, on our website, we've provided extensive information regarding the eviction moratorium. There are forms that are also available in both English and Spanish that can be completed by anyone seeking relief. Our second update tonight is to talk about the guidelines on facial coverings. As you may know, the county, the state, and the Centers for Disease Control have issued new guidance as it relates to face coverings in public. So Californians who leave their homes to conduct essential activities should wear face covering if they feel comfortable doing so, and that's strongly encouraged, along with continuing to practice social distancing, hand washing, and staying at home to the greatest extent possible. But if coming outside, utilizing a facial covering can help reduce infectious particles from those who could be infected but are asymptomatic. It is not recommended for residents to use N95 or surgical masks as we are trying to reserve as much as possible of a very limited supply of PPEs for those who need it the most to take care of those who are most ill from the disease, including healthcare workers and first responders. And so, again, we encourage the public to please wear facial covering such as scarves, and to please leave the supplies of N95 and surgical masks for our healthcare workers that are in desperate need and first responders. And for more information on the new guidance from the CDC, and CDPH, and the county, please visit our website as well. Then lastly, I'll just say that we continue to be very well-prepared for the, all of the challenges that we're facing related to COVID-19. We've implemented many different actions and programs to try to help residents, help businesses. I wanted to thank our mayor, especially, and our city council especially, for all the work that they're doing as it relates to reaching out to our businesses, working with all of our partners at the federal, state, and local levels, and keeping abreast of the legislation and all of the possibilities for additional funding and resources that can be provided to the community. The information is fast and forthcoming and ever-changing and dynamic, and our council has kept pace with this, and in many instances, has been ahead of the curve. And so, just wanted to thank the mayor and the city council for their extraordinary leadership, their support for staff recommendations as well as we brought things forward, but also leading during this very difficult time, and trying to think of many different creative ways to help the community as we all go through this. And so, we're positive that we're going to crush COVID and get through this, and thanks again for all of your help. Thanks to our businesses that are still open and operating. We're here to help, and also to the community. Thank you so much for complying with all of the very challenging orders and being very responsive during this difficult time. That's all I have.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Farrell Harrison, and thank you for all of the work that our emergency management team, as well as all of our essential workers are doing to get us through this difficult time. Okay, at this point, we are going to move to public comments. Ms. Green, did you receive any public comments that are not related to items on the agenda?
Yes.
If you have, can you please read them into the record at this time?
Yes, we have several. But first, I'd like to note that joining me here in the council chambers is Lieutenant LaPointe, and also Mr. Sethuraman, Public Services Director.
Thank you.
All right, the first public comment is from Jeff West. First, thanks to Mayor Foley, the entire city council, and the city staff for their tireless efforts on our behalf during this COVID-19 crisis. The leadership shown by Costa Mesa is reflected in the numbers tallied by the Orange County Health Agency. I'm very proud, as a 46-year Costa Mason, of the job you are doing. I'm very grateful for the community outreach on this issue, the timely publication of important subjects on the city website and social media, and the town halls have been used to provide information from experts. Second, we are now in the final quarter of fiscal year 2019-2020, and I'm concerned about the condition of our municipal finances and how they will be affected by this emergency. We canceled the Five Pack meeting this week where this issue would likely have been discussed, and I see no other meeting scheduled where this is the issue. South Coast Plaza is closed, most restaurants are closed except for takeout, most small businesses are closed. I know there are financial opportunities for them via the federal government, and I know we have mortgage and rental rules in place to help residents and other things. My biggest concern right now, other than trying to avoid the infection and keeping my neighbors safe, is how will my city manage to stay afloat financially? Will it be necessary to reduce staff and services to operate within our limited finances? If so, for how long? And since we no longer have a finance director and at last report are down at least six positions in the finance organization who is managing that critical function in city government today, thanks again for all you are doing during this crisis. Jeff West. The next public comment is from Michelle Schumacher. I am writing to you today to ask for your support in reducing a significant tax on all Orange County residents that oftentimes go unnoticed. Are you aware that the Transportation Quarter Agency has taxed OC homeowners to the tune of $706,334 million since the TCA, a government agency, was established in 1987? This tax comes in the form of development fees that are assessed on new residential and commercial properties developed or remodeled within Orange County. The TCA was formed in 1987 with the explicit purpose of constructing the 73, 241, and 261 toll roads. At the time that the TCA was established, bonds were issued to pay for construction of these toll roads. The promise made by the TCA at the time was that the debt taken on by the TCA for construction of these new toll roads would be paid off through a combination of development fees and tolls collected on the roads by drivers who used the roads. 100% of the debt was to be paid off within 30 years, and the toll roads were supposed to become freeways like the rest of the interstate highways within our great state. As it turns out, the TCA has horribly mismanaged their rule and has squandered these silent taxes paid for by your constituents. Not only are the 73, 241, and 261 still toll roads and not freeways, but the TCA is still over $4.7 billion in debt for construction of these roads. This is a dereliction of duty and travesty for Orange County taxpayers. By the time the bonds are repaid, it will cost $11 billion. The debt is going in the wrong direction, will never be paid down, or a major taxpayer bailout required negatively affecting Orange County and the state, according to an Orange County grand jury report. The TCA carries 64% of all JP8 debt in the OC. The TCA recently released a draft, a vision. The TCA is trying to do other non-toll projects, and this is serious mission creep. It is time to have the TCA solely focus on paying down the bonds instead of driving up housing and the cost of business in our county with these empty toll roads, and really get traffic moving by freeing the toll roads. We have OCTA and Caltrans there, is no need for this redundant wasteful agency. Taxpayers deserve better. The TCA sends hundreds of million dollars outside of our state on vendor contracts. If they want Orange County taxpayers to be able to afford the ever-increasing tolls, they need to be more mindful and keep the money in California. Thank you for your time, and please do something to stop the hemorrhage to taxpayers in our county with these economically discriminating toll roads. And then, the last public comment, the same comments was received by Kelly Jo Grandy, Sharon Bernard, Amber Cowell, Sarah Glass, Nicole Simon, Richard Wall, and Allison Bursette. Dear Mayor and city council members, we ask that you impose a moratorium on small se... Dear Mayor and City Council members, we ask that you impose a moratorium on small cells and other wireless infrastructure permits, process, and deployment until the COVID-19 emergency is over. The wireless providers are using the COVID-19 emergency as cover to expand and cement their rapid and virtually unsupervised deployment of harmful wireless infrastructure. Our local leaders should not have to dedicate time and resources to policing whether the wireless companies are following local and state law; they have far more important things to do. The FCC wireless permit rules allow emergency moratoria. Homeland Security Guidelines emphasize that maintenance of existing communications capability is the priority; new construction is not essential. The COVID-19 emergency has led to a government shutdown of nonessential activity. Hospitals, emergency response, and local officials are overwhelmed, and they must be allowed to focus on what is indeed essential. Now is not the time to be dedicating resources to expanding rather than just maintaining our networks. The FCC has directly held a local jurisdiction can impose a temporary halt to deployment and permits during emergencies. In the matter of accelerating wireline broadband deployment by removing barriers, FCC 18-111, 33 FCC RED 7705, 7784-77851572018, we recognize that there may be limited situations in the case of a natural disaster or other comparable emergency where an express or de facto moratoria that violates Section 253A may nonetheless be necessary to protect the public welfare, the safety and public welfare, or to ensure the continued quality of telecommunications services. Homeland Security has declared that local government is on the forefront and can take control over determining whether to temporarily halt all nonessential activity. Homeland Security Guidance Documents prioritize maintenance of existing communication systems and do not support essential status for new construction. See Homeland Security Cybersecurity and Infrastructure Security Agency identifying critical infrastructure during COVID-19. Homeland Security, like the FCC, understands that it is essential in emergency situations justify focusing on protecting, responding, recovering, and restoring of existing systems. But new communications facilities, construction is and should be deemed nonessential and subject to lockdown for so long as we are under emergency conditions. Cities can and should impose a moratorium on deployment in their local area and freeze the permit process until the COVID-19 emergency is over. Thank you. That concludes public comments.
Thank you, Ms. Green. I also received a public communication that they wanted me to read. Dear Mayor Foley, I hope this email finds you well. I just want to express our gratitude to you, your team, and everyone who worked very hard to serve us in the Costa Mesa city. Thank you. Be safe. Hope the storm passes soon. Best regards, Aircon Demiraji, Orange County Turkish American Association President. Okay, at this time, we will move to council member committee reports, comments, and suggestions. And before we do that, there's some kind of a ticking. I'm not sure whose phone that is, but there's a ticking noise. Okay, there, it went away. This is the time for council members to provide comments and committee reports. Please unmute your phone when I call your name. Each council member is limited to four minutes. We will continue this process for all items on the agenda when it is time for council member comment. Councilmember Reynolds.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Welcome.
Okay, great. Okay, so, we'll probably be doing a lot of this today. I want to, of course, echo my thanks to all of the staff and our first responders who are, have so quickly mobilized in a very dynamic and dangerous environment for all of you who are working for us every day. And thank you, of course, to our Costa Mesa residents as well. I've been really proud of being able to be a representative for you in this process. We've seen our community come together in a way I don't know that any of us could have expected or hoped for from following our stay-at-home recommendations, of course, following the physical distancing guidelines, wearing masks outside under the new guidelines, making masks for each other and for others, all the positive signs of encouragement in the windows and messages on the sidewalk. It's been really, it all helps in this really difficult situation, so we appreciate all of you working with us through this crisis. Please do continue, so to our residents and businesses, please do continue communicating with us on what you see and what you need. Again, it's a rapidly changing and very difficult environment, and as you've heard from our reports so far, we have our staff working, and we are working daily to find solutions to help, again, all of our residents and businesses through this crisis. So, please do keep communicating with us. We will find solutions. One item I've been becoming more concerned about, even more than usual, is pedestrian safety. I've heard reports and seen myself increasing vehicle speeds on our roads. I think as the roads have become clearer, people are driving more quickly, which only increases danger for both people inside and outside the vehicles. We've seen some tough collisions in the past week, too. So, thankful to our police force who's out there, traffic control monitoring those vehicle speeds. If we could get some signage out there, I think that might be helpful, too, just to remind people to slow down. And, you know, we have a lot of people in our community, I think especially in the lower-income neighborhoods, who have no other option but to walk for their essential needs. And they have an even more difficult situation to get across crosswalks at intersections. They have no choice but to touch these pedestrian buttons that lots of other people may be touching. I've asked staff to look into some potential solutions for that. Also, normally, we walk on sidewalks, but our sidewalks are narrow, right? And so, it's very difficult to walk on a sidewalk and keep your six-foot distance when you're passing someone. So, in these scenarios, oftentimes, people have to choose to walk close to another person or walk out in the street. Just another reason I think we need to be really conscious about driving slowly. Again, I think some signage on that would be helpful. I'd like staff to look into some solutions on that, and I can recommend some specific areas, too, where I've seen these sort of conflicts be more common. That's it for me tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Reynolds. Councilmember Chavez.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you to everyone who's listening in today on YouTube or Spectrum Channel 1. I know it's not as fun not seeing it on the, under TV or monitor, but this is the reality at the face. Last meeting, I mentioned that this is our moment, our generation. This is going to be our big defining generational moment, and I think we're doing a great job in Costa Mesa. Every day, I'm looking at the county's numbers for cases per city, and I notice ours has grown, but it's not growing as fast as other cities. So, I just want to thank every single one of you who's staying home, who's wearing masks when they go out, who's only going out for essential services, because by doing this, we really are keeping people safe, really are making sure that we're doing our part to make sure that we're not spreading COVID-19. Deep thanks to staff and everyone who is currently working right now. You know, you're on the front lines for us, and we truly all appreciate it. I did have a few things I wanted to mention. You know, over the past few days, I've been getting a lot of emails and texts and phone calls regarding people unable to pay rent. I think as a city, we should be looking at ways to promote information more thoroughly, because as I said before, not everyone has access to the internet or even Facebook to see what we're doing on those mediums. And one thing that has become more and more clearly clear to me is that there are some people who, due to prior illnesses, are not able to get food. So, I don't know if the city manager, Phil Harris, has any recommendations for us in her comments, but all we wanted was to see if there's any resources we have available to us as Costa Mesa residents, because there are some people that really don't have the opportunity to go and buy food even during this time. And I always think in times like this, you know, we have to get to, we have to get to each other. You know, it's times like this where we have to make sure our neighbor's doing fine. If you have a neighbor, send him a text, you know, make sure that they're okay, you know, because honestly, we don't know who may not have rent, we don't know who may not have food, and we don't know who has what they need. Thank you, everyone. Stay safe.
Thank you, Councilmember Chavez. Councilmember Maher.
Thank you. I think Councilmember Chavez and Councilmember Reynolds were both very eloquent just now, so I'm not going to repeat everything except just to say thank you to everyone who is working so hard, city staff, first responders, the entire city of Costa Mesa crew. Also, just a thank you to everyone who tuned in to the Facebook Live that Mayor Protem Stevens and I did on Friday with a representative from the Small Business Association Administration, excuse me. I think that was helpful, and he and I have a couple of additional things lined up that we're going to try to roll out to help small businesses here in the coming week and a half or so. So, please stay tuned for that, and that's all I had. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Manzour.
Thank you. Hello to everyone who is listening tonight. Appreciate everyone's patience during everything we're going through. Normally, we have a moment of solemn expression, but it's not on the agenda tonight, and it was going to be done by Pastor David Manet from Calvary Chapel, Costa Mesa. And I spoke with him, and I mentioned I'd be willing to give the prayer that he normally does, and he, so he sent it to me. So, on behalf of him, these are his words that he sent me, and I'd like to offer it tonight. Lord, we gather again and ask for your continued guidance, wisdom, and strength upon the mayor and all the council members in the matters before us tonight and the decisions that need to be made. Your blessing upon our police department, fire department, water department, and all operations of city service, and blessing upon every person and family in Costa Mesa. During this difficult and challenging time, Lord, draw near to us as we draw near to you. The Lord bless us, the Lord keep us, the Lord make His face shine upon us, and be gracious to us. The Lord lift up His countenance upon us and give us peace. In the name of the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit, amen. Just a couple quick other items. Planning Commission meetings that are coming up, I think are going to be largely devoted to One Metro West. I've been getting a lot of people contacting me, talking to me about it and expressing their concern. They want to speak up about it, and obviously, it's difficult during this time. I don't know if there's any way to postpone it. If there is, I would request that. Otherwise, I want to ask if there is a way to open up this better, maybe even our meetings as well. Well, there isn't, there isn't an issue as big yet. One Metro West will be coming to the council, but for right now, it's a planning commission. If there is a way to have people comment on it outside, but there just has to be a way to open this up more, otherwise, I think there's going to be tremendous backlash because it's such a huge project. Someone mentioned Five Pack tonight in one of the letters. I didn't realize that that committee had been shut down. I would like to see it reopened. If that means doing it by phone, so be it, but I think more than ever, we need our Five Pack Committee. I think it's really important that we run some of these fiscal issues by them and that the public and the community has an opportunity for some input and that we really keep them informed about what's going on. And lastly, I appealed an item to the Planning Commission. I won't go into it in too much detail, but generally, the appeal was due to a fee that was being charged, a traffic impact fee, which was, you know, a few thousand dollars. And that's very hard for this business that's trying to open. They're actually trying to move here to Costa Mesa from another city. And at a time when businesses are closed, they're not making any money, I think we need to do everything we can. So, that appeal is still on the table. I hope to have a chance to talk to staff a little bit more to find out if there's a way to address that. But in the meantime, I've been, other people have spoken with me about some of the fees in the city, the traffic impact fee, building fees, remodel fees, a whole number of fees that people are facing, especially now that they have no money coming in, or they're facing closing their business, or we're trying to, when this is all over, we may want to attract new businesses to Costa Mesa. I think it would be wise enough, wise of us, and this is a great opportunity, to be at the forefront of reviving businesses and bringing new businesses to Costa Mesa when this is all over, and I think we should start that now. So, I'd like to request that, you know, maybe as an item that we could discuss, the issue of eliminating or reducing some of our fees, and that's all I have for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Guinness.
I have a few things. One is short-term rentals. Recently, the city of Newport Beach put a moratorium on short-term rentals. And while you may have wondered who might be insane enough to want to go on vacation in a time like this, there are people. This would be potentially exacerbated by the fact that many state beaches are closed. However, the state beaches in Orange County are, for the most part, still open. So, I would like to see us put a ban on short-term rentals except for those needed for emergency personnel within our residential areas. That's basically people using their house as a hotel room. And also, we might want to communicate to the state about, I realize people need a place to go and walk and be open, but to close some state beaches and leave ours open, I think can end up creating an attraction, bringing more people from out of the area. So, if we could talk to our state reps about why that is, and that may be worth investigating. And then, finally, I'd like to thank everybody who's worked so hard within our city, our city staff, doing double duty, dealing with this and trying to do their regular jobs. Also, our grocery workers, awesome job with, dealing with very crabby people. They're to be commended. Our delivery people, our FedEx and our UPS and our mail carriers and all the work they're doing. There are so many people who are working so hard, and the rest of us owe it to them to do our part, to wear our masks, to maintain our social distancing, wash our hands, do all the things to keep ourselves safe, because this is my new slogan. Don't be a statistic, be a survivor. Don't make yourself a statistic by not taking precautions. Be a survivor. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Guinness. Good advice. Mayor Protem Stevens.
Yeah, thank you. Everybody has talked so well about this. I just have a few things to say. You know, from the city perspective, thank you from the top at the city council. Everybody seems to be working so hard and in unison on these issues. Thank you to everything the mayor's doing and to Councilmember Maher for partnering with me on some projects, including our forum last Friday. Thank you to the city manager who's working so hard under very difficult circumstances, and her staff, and the police and fire department, and also all of our employees that are working. Obviously, thanks to the healthcare workers and all of the essential services people. But what I want to call out is not only the people that are working so hard for us to keep us going, but also the people that are making such profound sacrifices to keep us safe and keep our community safe. People like the seniors in high school that aren't able to play sports or go to the prom. I mean, it wasn't, it may be hard for you to believe, but I actually got to go to my senior prom, and I played baseball, and I know that that was important, and those are things that I'll remember for the rest of my life. And to think that these students are foregoing those for the benefit of the community is really something. It's quite a sacrifice. And thanks, Councilmember Mansour, for reading that invocation. Remember, it is Holy Week, and you can attend most Easter services online these days. My family did Palm Sunday on YouTube, if you can believe that. And we're at a dark period, but as sure as Jesus rises on Easter Sunday, we will get out of it. So, we have hope. We're in this together, and we will, we will get out of it together.
Thank you. Lots of things going around tonight. I also want to express my appreciation to all of those that have already, to some of our sponsors for feeding our essential workers at City Hall, our police, and our fire as well. Thank you to Jennifer Keller and her firm, Keller-Anderley, the firm Everett Glory, and the firm Haynes &amp; Boone, who have worked- worked in conjunction with three different restaurants so far, Dick Church's, Miguel's Jr., and Quattro Cafe, to feed all of our employees who are literally working around the clock at City Hall. So we appreciate anyone who is interested in helping to serve our first responders and our essential workers at City Hall. You can reach out to us and we can make that happen. It also helps our local restaurant businesses who are struggling right now. And I want to also give a shout out to Ms. Kahawai, who is with the Newport Mesa Unified School District, and who is an Asantia High School graduate and was a Costa Mesa High School English teacher, now working at the district level, who provided, along those same lines, Mayor Pro Tem Stevens, signs for all of our seniors who are graduating from Costa Mesa and Asantia High Schools, to put into their yard. And something as simple as the recognition that their seniors, you know, in their front yard, I think has made a lot of families bring a little bit of brightness to what is truly a lot of disappointment this year. But we all have our health, as do most of us. Let's talk about that. 131 cases up in Orange County as of today. We've had 15 deaths, one death today. We're still doing well as compared to the rest of the state and the rest of the country, but we can do better by following all of the guidance that other council members expressed here tonight. We have, in Costa Mesa, we have 21 cases reported, and that's up one from yesterday. So we're doing a good job, Costa Mesa. So keep up the good work and continue to stay home. There's 129 people who've been hospitalized, and 75 are in ICU. And a little bit about testing, because that seems to be a topic that lots of people talk about. We've tested in Orange County 11,307 people. There's more testing on its way, and as I understand it, in speaking with our congressional and state representatives, they are working very hard to get more testing here in Orange County. One of the concerns that I think we should all be worried about is that we see a majority of the people testing are in the age group of 35 to 64, and so probably more active. So let's stay home. I also want to give a shout out to our council members and to every one of you for all of the efforts that you are engaging in, with our residents, our business owners, and all of your efforts to promote safety protocols and encourage people to stay home, and to support your neighbors, and to share creative ideas and inspiring messages. It's very helpful at this time, and that engagement is really important to our community. So thank you so much. Thank you, Councilmember Chavez, for joining me on Thursday. We'll be hosting a town hall Q and A. It will be bilingual, and we'll be joined by school board member Ashley Anderson, as well as, I believe, a representative from our fire department who is bilingual. And to address the concern about people who are not online, I think many of us share that concern. As I understand it, a resource guide that is in both English and Spanish will be going out to residents by the end of the week, so please watch for that. And also, as it relates to the beaches, Councilmember Guinness, our assemblywoman, along with many others, have signed on to a letter to the governor asking that the beaches be closed for that very reason that you raised. That's very important. And then, as far as the Five Pack Committee, as I understand, that was because of this week and the city manager wanting to get a plan together. We will have on our next agenda a plan regarding our finances, and we will be discussing our finances and the impacts from COVID-19. So we will have a full discussion about that with the public and with our council. We have a lot going on with that regard. I wanted to also share that on April 5, I requested that the city attorney and the city manager work on a COVID-19 business improvement restaurant and small business permit fee waiver program. In my work in conjunction with some of our small businesses, especially our restaurants, one of the things that they shared was that they are needing to close because they just can't make it work under the stay-at-home orders, but that they want to use this time to maybe remodel or make improvements. And so I have requested a program that the city attorney is going to be working on, and hopefully will bring back by the next council meeting. And then also, wanted to address a concern that I have, ongoing concern regarding the safety of our groceries and our delivery workers. And I know there's been a lot of talk in the news about this, but I have requested that our city manager and our city attorney research the issue of what rules we can put in place in order to protect the safety and hygiene of both our grocery workers, our restaurant workers, as well as third-party platformed delivery drivers who are working in the city of Costa Mesa. Over the last few weeks, I've received several communications, both by text and email and phone calls from both customers as well as employees of various different businesses in the city, as well as delivery drivers, who are very concerned about the lack of safety protocols, the lack of available supplies, like gloves and facial coverings, masks, hygiene products, hand sanitizer, and the like, as well as the failure to comply with the physical distancing requirements. And many of these employees are fearful because they don't want to get sick, but also, they cannot afford to not continue to stay employed. As it relates to the third-party platformed drivers, we've received complaints that, under the circumstances now where many coffee shops and other restaurants are closed, they don't have any restroom facilities to use during the day, and so that's becoming an issue as well. So I've asked our staff to look into these issues, and I hope that we can create some standards that are reasonable, fair, and protective of both the workers and the public, because the community transmission is more likely if we aren't using good protocols within our local businesses that are still operating and delivering to our homes. So that is all I have for tonight, and I appreciate everybody and all you're doing. I know it's a lot of work, and I know that we will get through this, as Mayor Pro Tem Stevens said, if we work together. So thank you. City manager, Carol Harrison, did you have an additional report?
No, thank you.
Okay, thank you. City attorney Barlow, did you have anything else to report?
Not this evening, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Let's see. Now we'll move to the consent calendar. All matters listed under the consent calendar are considered to be routine, will be acted upon in one motion. There'll be no separate discussion of these items unless members of the city council, staff, or the public requested these specific items to be discussed and be removed from the consent calendar for discussion. Madam Clerk, I believe that we have item number five that has been requested to be polled. Is there any other item that's been requested to be polled?
Yes, Councilmember Reynolds has requested item number four.
Okay. Okay. Counsel, is there a motion to approve the balance?
I move the balance.
Second.
Okay. Councilmember Chavez moved the balance. Councilmember Marr, I think I heard, was the second. Call for the question by voice vote. City clerk, can you call for the question by voice vote?
Yes. Councilmember Reynolds?
Yes.
Councilmember Marr?
Yes.
Councilmember Monsur?
Yes.
Councilmember Guinness?
Yes, and let me interject. If I'm gone, we may be ready to have a power failure. There were just a lot of big popping noises, and last time we had that, we lost power.
Oh, no. Okay.
But anyway, I vote yes.
Okay.
Will you text me if you are gone?
Okay.
Councilmember Chavez?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Stevens?
Yes.
Mayor Foley?
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you. Item number four. Ms. Carol Harrison, will you be giving the report, or is Mr. Satharaman there?
Madam Mayor, I just had a clarification, so we may be able to skip the report.
Oh, this is on item number four? Well, it's up to you, because it's already been polled, so we'd have to, if you want to skip the report and ask?
Well, I want to, yeah, I want to ask questions. Sometimes we skip the report.
Hold on. We need to read into the record what it is we're talking about, because especially under these circumstances. So, city clerk, can you read the item, and then, Mr. Satharaman, can you just give a brief overview of what the topic is? Ms. Green, are you there?
I think Ms. Green.
Yes, I am here. I'm sorry. I had to turn on some of the, item number four is beverage container recycling payment program authorization.
Okay. And Ms. Carol Harrison, is it you? Oh, Mr. Satharaman, go ahead.
So, good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the city council. So pursuant to California Public Resources Code, Section 14581, the California Department of Resources, Recycle and Recovery, known as CALDRecycle, is distributing approximately $10.5 million from fiscal year 2019-20 to eligible cities. Based on our city's population, city of Costa Mesa is eligible to receive approximately, actually, $28,500. So they have pretty strict guidelines on how this can be used, and these are intended for promoting beverage container recycling efforts. And the city intends to use this by purchasing dual bins, dual waste bins that can be placed in parks. We have several trash bins that are not very attractive, and we want to purchase these bins to replace them. That's the end of my report.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Reynolds, did you have a question?
Yeah, so my question was, I've done a little bit of reading about recycling and reached out to our local recycling expert, Michael Carey, at the ACU Recycling Center, about a question I had. I had heard that the dual bin recycling sort of method was not very effective. And so, you know, I think, of course, it makes sense to take, you know, money that's available and use it, but I want to make sure that we're going to be using it in a way that's effective. So my question is, is this proposal or this recommendation sort of committing to the use of these dual bins at parks, or can we be flexible in how we use the funds for recycling purposes?
So, Madam Mayor, if I can answer that. So, Councilmember Reynolds, this grant program is very restrictive in what it can be used for. In previous years, many years ago, we were using this to actually fund benches using recycled materials and things like that, but they have narrowed the scope of this to be only for beverage recycling container program. So that's why, or some kind of efforts to promote beverage container recycling. And for us, this is a good way to spruce up some of the old trash bins we have. We could replace them with a dual bin, and of course, we have to go through some kind of good signage and frequent removal of trash to make sure that the beverage is not used to put trash in it. So we'll be figuring out creative ways to design this container, get good containers that are functional, and promote the intended use.
Okay, and I had recommended that staff connect with Michael Carey at the recycling center to talk about sort of performance metrics and what are really effective methods for recycling. Can you do that, or will you do that?
Yes, we'll do that.
Okay, yeah, there's, this just happens to be an area I have a lot of interest in and connections in. So, yeah, I really want to make sure that we are diligent about sort of spending this money in a way that's, again, going to be effective. So, yeah, please do use those resources. That was my question. Thank you.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Good idea. Councilmembers, Councilmember Chavez, did you have any questions regarding this item?
Nope.
Councilmember Marr?
No.
Councilmember Monsur?
No.
Councilmember Guinness?
Yes, actually, a sort of related item. The newspaper recently reported that some of the municipal recycling facilities were not operating because the people were in close proximity to each other. And number one, I wondered if ours, if the one where our trash goes, is operative. And then the other question I had is, I'm kind of appalled that people would be sorting trash and not have protective gear on a regular basis. So I'm wondering about that, or are they just saving the gear for medical personnel? Or do we have an answer to that at this point? And if we don't, I would like to know more about that.
Mr. Satharaman?
Madam Mayor, so at this point, we are, we actually received a letter from one of our waste toddlers about some of the material facilities are not separating out the different, you know, recycled and the trash, and they're all, recycling also is going to the dump site, actually, due to the COVID-19 issues. So we are working on figuring out more on this aspect. I know the county is also looking into this one, and we'll have more information down the road on this one.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem Stevens, did you have any questions regarding this item?
No, ma'am.
Thank you. Okay, I'll close public comments. Ms. Green, did we have any public comments related to this item?
No.
Okay, we'll close public comments.
Reynolds, remove the item.
Okay.
Remove staff recommendations, sorry.
Thank you.
Second.
I didn't hear the second.
Okay. Motion by Councilmember Reynolds, second by Councilmember Marr, and call for the question by voice vote, Ms. Green.
Councilmember Reynolds?
Yes.
Councilmember Marr?
Yes.
Councilmember Monsur?
Yes.
Councilmember Guinness?
Yes.
Councilmember Chavez?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Stevens?
Yes.
Mayor Foley?
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero.
Okay, we'll move to item number five on the consent calendar. Ms. Green, can you read the item?
Thank you. This is resolution adopting a list of products for fiscal year 2020-21 funded by Senate Bill One, the Road Repair and Accountability Act of 2017.
Okay, and Councilmember Chavez pulled this item on behalf of resident Flo Martin. If we could have Mr. Satharaman give us a brief report on this item?
Madam Mayor?
And I'll turn it over to Councilmember Chavez.
Yes, Madam Mayor and members of the council. So Senate Bill One, the Road Repair and Accountability Act of 2017, was passed by the legislature to address the significant shortfall in funding for transportation purposes. This bill created the Road Maintenance and Rehabilitation Account, RMRA, and basically, it's from different sources. The funds are allocated, some are allocated to the city, and some are to the state and county, and there are several other competitive programs that come out of this particular fund. So the city has an allocation every year, and we are estimated to receive approximately $2.2 million from this fund for fiscal year 2020-21. And one of the requirements of this bill is that we have to have council approve a list of projects that will use this funding. With the prior year funding, we have, the city council has approved a couple of segments of Newport Boulevard, Frontage Road, and the approved projects were Southbound Newport Boulevard between Mesa and 19th, and Northbound Newport between 19th and 22nd. So what we're asking for is, in this project, to fund the remaining segments of Newport. segments of Newport, so that the entire Frontage Roads, both sides of Newport Boulevard, Frontage Roads are rehabilitated or improved. Currently, this particular segment of Newport Boulevard is, you know, the, the PCI value for this segment is at 70, which is kind of on a, on a, on a poor scale, and we want to make sure that these improvements happen. And in conjunction with these improvements, the city intends to use these to also make improvements to the bicycle facilities, to ADA, to improve ADA access ramps, sidewalks in that area, and also storm drain improvements. So it's, it's a pretty extensive program using current year money and also the future year's money. And the, the reason why we selected this, but this project is because there is no other funding source to implement this project, and this will be a, a good way to get this completed. That concludes my report. If you have any questions, I can answer them.
Thank you, Mr. Seth Raman. Councilmember Chavez, did you have questions?
Uh, no, Madam Mayor. Like you mentioned before, Ms. Martin wanted to know what the improvements were going to be on the Boulevard, and Seth Raman did a good job explaining what those would be. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, councilmembers, are there any questions? Councilmember Reynolds?
Um, yeah, I would appreciate a little bit of information about how the design process works and opportunities for input, and I'm particularly thinking about the, the, gosh, I guess it would be the east side Newport Boulevard in this conversation. So, one of the specific questions, Mr. Seth Raman, was about incorporating complete street elements. I think there's kind of a, a range of, of different design solutions that could be considered to include complete streets. My understanding is that you would plan to incorporate those elements into the proposal. What, what opportunity would there be to, to influence that design proposal, particularly according to the complete streets focus?
So, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Reynolds, we intend to actually, as part of, this will come back to you for awarding a design contract down the road, and we'll reach out to you beforehand to kind of get your thoughts on what should be included in the design. And we also want, my, we will also look into the incorporation of actually a complete street expert as part of the design process. With respect to the outreach, we'll try to use the, the BikeWay and Walkability Committee to, to make presentations at, at different levels, at 30% completion of the project, as well as the 70% completion, so you get to see what's, what's included and, and what's part of the project. So that's, that's our intent on this one.
Okay. And just to, to follow up on that, one of the challenges they, I know, or maybe situations that we've run into in the last couple of years, right, of getting a lot of feedback, maybe when we're too far down the design process. So is the process that you're proposing, would that mitigate kind of that issue we've run into recently?
Yes, Councilmember Reynolds, we will incorporate the requirements of, of making presentations to the, to the BikeWay and Walkability Committee at, at these intervals as part of the proposal.
Okay, I appreciate that clarification. Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Chavez, did you have, well, any other questions?
Uh, none, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Mar?
No.
Councilmember Mansour?
No.
Councilmember Guinness?
No.
Mayor Pro Tim Stevens, any questions?
No, I do not.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Seth Raman.
Thank you.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna open public comment. Ms. Green, is there, are there any public comments related to this item?
The one public comment from Ms. Flo Martin, it's, here's hoping you're all taking care of yourselves and your loved ones at home. Thank you for working so hard to implement safety measures for us. I have read CC5, and would like more specific info on what said improvements for Newport Boulevard are under construction. Thank you. That ends public comments.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Seth Raman, the, I think you answered that question, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, council, is there a motion?
I'll move the item, Chavez.
Okay, is there a second?
Reynolds, second.
Okay, motion by Councilmember Chavez, second by Councilmember Reynolds, call for the question by voice vote, Ms. Green.
Thank you. Councilmember Chavez?
Yes.
Councilmember Guinness?
Yes.
Councilmember Mansour?
Yes.
Councilmember Mar?
Yes.
Councilmember Reynolds?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Stevens?
Yes.
Mayor Foley?
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero.
Okay, we'll move to new business. We have five new business items tonight, and, uh, city clerk, will you please read the title for item number one?
Upgrade of the AT&amp;T Vesta 9/11 Telephone System Through Funding Provided by the State of California Governor's Office of Emergency Services, Emergency Communications Branch. Presentation by Lieutenant La Pointe, Police Department.
Okay, thank you, Lieutenant La Pointe. We can see you, but you can't see us, so it's nice to have you here before us. Can you please give us the presentation?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor, and members of the council. Lieutenant Joyce La Pointe, I'm here to present on the 911 Vesta Telephone System Upgrade. It's basically the backbone for our 911 call center. Background we have here is the Police Department's Communication Center is the central service and operations for public safety in the city. In nineteen, in 2019, communications received or processed over 205,404 calls. And what that means is that basically, we've gotten calls from the public. The others is 137,000 calls, 384, which are actually 911 calls that, so if you take the total of those two calls, that is how much our center is taking in each year, and it's quite a bit. On July 3rd, 2013, the city entered into an agreement with AT&amp;T California to implement and install the Vesta 911 Telephone System, and this was to satisfy the enhanced 911 system requirements. And basically, what that did is, is it gave us added GPS to know where these 911 calls were coming from. The system upgrades are required every five to seven years. This helps us keep up with the latest technology advances. This was funded by the State Emergency Telephone Number Account, established under the State's Emergency Telephone Users Surge Act. This year, on March 5th, the California 911 Emergency Branch approved funding to upgrade and maintain our current Vesta 911 for the total of $417,978.35. And this comes at no cost to the city. It's completely funded. This is what the system looks like. I thought it would be nice for you to see, basically, the actual equipment box. You can see in the monitor, there's a lot of different screens in there. Those are basic city telephone numbers. On the bottom is the keyboard, which allows us to move efficiently through, moving through those numbers. So you can see the hardware. It also has a background software that makes us efficient. It manages all the telephone calls within the city, and obviously, it increases the efficiency if they're able to move with a click of a button. This is a essential equipment for our 911. It allows our communications officers to answer 911 calls and non-emergency calls more quickly. They're able to stack and prioritize calls. It also automatically calls back numbers that are hangups. So if we have somebody that calls in and is having an emergency, and they are having a medical problem, it will automatically call back so that we don't lose that call or miss it. We can also transfer calls within the city, within any, any phone at the police station to fire, within the city, we can transfer calls to different maintenance, et cetera. So, the recommendation is that the city council approves the upgrade and the maintenance of the AT&amp;T Vesta 911 Telephone System with the partnership funding from the California 911 Emergency Communications Branch. I'd also like to authorize the city manager to execute any documents necessary to secure the funding from the state. So I thank you for your consideration, and I welcome your questions.
Thank you, Lieutenant. At this time, I will ask for questions from the council. Councilmember Reynolds, any questions?
No.
Councilmember Chavez?
No.
Councilmember Mar?
No.
Councilmember Mansour?
No, thank you.
Councilmember Guinness?
None.
Mayor Pro Tim Stevens?
Nope.
Okay, I don't have any questions. Lieutenant La Pointe, it's obviously that we are in need of an upgrade. Are there any comments from the public, Ms. Green?
Madam Mayor, no comments.
Okay, I'll close public comment. Council?
Move to approve Seth's recommendation.
Okay, I think that was, um, so I think whether the, motion by, I think that was Councilmember Reynolds, was that right?
Yeah, with Ms. or, I think you moved to a second.
I, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
I will second it, or move it short.
I heard the, I heard the second. I'm trying to clarify who was the maker of the motion. Was it Councilmember Reynolds or Mar?
Reynolds.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Reynolds, second by Councilmember Mansour. Call for the question by voice vote.
Councilmember Chavez?
Yes.
Councilmember Guinness? Councilmember Guinness?
Yes.
Councilmember Mansour?
Yes.
Councilmember Mar?
Yes.
Councilmember Reynolds? Mayor Pro Tim Stevens?
Yes.
Mayor Foley?
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you. Okay, we will now move to item number two.
Thank you. Item number, item number two is Adopt Ordinance Entitled: An Ordinance of the City of Costa Mesa, California, Amending Chapter One in General of Title Six, Disaster Relief and Civil Defense, of the Costa Mesa Municipal Code, Relating to Emergency Preparedness, Organization, and Coordination. Presentation by Ms. Hal Barlow, City Attorney.
Good evening, council. What I, this is our second reading. You adopted an urgency ordinance previously, and then this ordinance, with some revisions that were requested by council, was introduced previously. This would be the second reading. It's a regular ordinance. So right now, we're operating under the terms of the urgency ordinance. This ordinance makes some updates to our code, which has been in place since 1960, and largely follows the model ordinance that has been promulgated by the State of California Department of Emergency Services. We made changes that you requested previously, and we are recommending your approval of the ordinance, but I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, open the item up for questions. Councilmember Reynolds, any questions?
No questions.
Councilmember Chavez?
Nope.
Councilmember Mar?
No.
Councilmember Mansour?
No.
Councilmember Guinness?
Yes. Um, page three of the staff report, where they enumerate, where the ordinance enumerates the powers of the director, one of the powers is to make, are you there?
Yes, we're here.
Okay, I heard a weird noise. Okay. To make and issue rules and regulations on matters reasonably related to the protection of life and property as affected by such emergency, provided, however, such rules and regulations must be confirmed at the earliest practicable time by the city council. So that does imply some limitation on, on the emergency powers. Is that correct? And how do we interpret whether something is reasonably related to the protection of life and property as affected by the emergency? Who, who would determine that?
The Director of Emergency Services, if he or she had a question about whether something properly fell into that category from a legal perspective, would consult with the city attorney, who would then make a recommendation. That recommendation would then be part of any follow-up action by the city council. And yes, there is a limitation. It does indicate that we will, where we can, we will bring items to the council in advance, and we've done that on a number of occasions during the present emergency. However, where there needs to take action is immediate, then the city manager, as Director of Emergency Services, would issue that order, regulation, and appropriations, and then that would have to be considered by the council. Now, although the code is, says, you know, as soon as practicable in, in a couple of places, we have treated our ordinance as requiring that we bring these items to the council for ratification within seven days, and we have carried that out with respect to all actions by the city manager on urgency matter.
And then, E, where it's to execute all of the special powers conferred upon him or her by this title or by resolution or emergency plan pursuant heretofore adopted by the city council, those, that sort of conferring of power would have to be done publicly, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. And, and for example, the city council adopted the Emergency Operations Plan for the city in 2013. We are currently looking at that to see whether there's any need at all to make revisions in, to address the current emergency. We certainly are doing our best to keep the council informed and to seek any approvals that may be necessary as this emergency requires potential revision.
And then, down to Section 6.9, where it's a misdemeanor for any persons during an emergency to willfully obstruct, hinder, or delay any member of the emergency management organization in the enforcement of any lawful rule or regulation pursuant to this title. What would be the penalties then? The standard misdemeanor?
A misdemeanor is punishable, yeah, misdemeanor is punishable by up to six months in jail or a $1,000 fine, and/or a $1,000 fine. That's the maximum penalty for a single misdemeanor.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Mayor Pro Tim Stevens, any questions?
Just one, and it kind of relates also to what Councilmember Guinness mentioned, is there, there are certain powers that can, appear to have, to be able to be exercised by the Director of Emergency Services without the prior approval or even the ratification of the city council, then others specify that they have to be approved or ratified as early as practical purposes. Whatever that language is in that regard, can, can, you confirm whoever, whether it be the city manager or the city attorney, that, that those distinctions are in that model ordinance, and we have not in any way, you know, tailored our ordinance, and, to, other than what's in the model ordinance?
That's correct, Mr. Mayor Pro Tim. And I do want to make clear that the, the essential role of the city council as the overarching policymaker and director of, you know, the, the boss of, the city attorney and the boss of the city manager isn't changed by this ordinance, and the role of the city council as the policymakers isn't changed. The, the primary function of this ordinance is to allow us to move expeditiously and to deal with an emergency, whether it be an earthquake, or flooding, or, in this case, a pandemic, to allow the city manager to exercise the functions of her office in terms of controlling personnel and purchasing, and the normal things that the city manager does, but in a more expeditious way, and sometimes in advance of council approval, but only to the extent that it is necessary to preserve life and property in the event of an emergency.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. A couple of questions along the same lines. Looking at Section 6-6, uh, what is it, D, can you confirm that the requisition necessary, to requisition necessary personnel or material of any city department or agency would not include the city attorney's department?
Uh, that is correct. The city attorney reports independently to the city council and is hired by the city council. However, typically during a proclamation, or issuing a proclamation of emergency, we would include the authority to seek counsel from the, from the city attorney, but under no circumstances would the city attorney report to the city manager as the Director of Emergency Services. the Director of Emergency Services otherwise.
Okay, and then as it relates to, uh, section, uh, B, of that same, it's six dash six D, uh, there is a indication that there's an order of succession that needs to be approved by the city council. Um, I asked about this, and I was informed as to the order of succession, which you can clarify, but when does the city council approve the order of succession?
Uh, I, I have not had a opportunity yet. I'm sorry, Madam Mayor. Um, I know that the e- emergency operations plan may already address that, and, uh, perhaps, uh, city manager Farrell Harrison can respond to that, but if it's not already included in the existing emergency operations plan, uh, we will be bringing that forward to you. It has been worked out. We've been working on continuity of operations plans and other, uh, components for this particular emergency, so that we are fully up to speed and fully capable of backfilling any need for the city. Uh, if we need to bring that forward, we'll bring that forward to you at your next regular meeting.
Okay. And then as it relates to six dash seven, emergency management organization, can you clarify whether the city council as a body and individuals is part of the emergency management organization?
I, I can. Um, and it can be confusing because the, the code refers to all officers and employees of the city. And of course, for many purposes, uh, both elected and appointed officials, planning commissioners, city council members, and so on, are considered officers of the city. They have to take the, the oath of allegiance, and also, uh, wouldn't be scribed if you have to sign the disaster, uh, um, services acknowledgement. Um, however, the intent is not to have council members and commissioners whose role is primarily either, um, adjudicatory, quasi-adjudicatory, or legislative, i.e., policymaking, to, um, be, um, roped into the, the, um, you know, digging holes and whatnot. Our, our function as staff, uh, is the, is the actual, um, organization. Uh, officers of the city include, for example, the city manager and the city attorney. We certainly are included in that management organization, uh, and to the extent that we need, um, direction or guidance or approval from the city council, uh, the council is certainly included, but not to the extent of us directing you what to do or having you digging holes instead of making policies or decisions.
Okay, so my question, I, I didn't think of digging holes, but, um, my question really is because that paragraph, it, it assumes, it includes volunteers and other groups that are not staff members of the city of Costa Mesa.
Yes, ma'am.
So, I just, I was just trying to understand, based on some conflicting information that I received from your office and then the police department, whether or not the officers, under the normal definition, would be part of the emergency management organization? And it's hard for me to know, because the police department response was that we are not part of the organization. Your response is that we are part of the organization. It seems to me the city council as a body would be part of the organization, so I don't know, I don't know the answer. So, can somebody clarify?
Yes, I'm, I'm, I'm trying to do that, and I apologize. Um, this, think of this as a corporation, which it is, and, um, uh, if we were, um, let's say Three M, uh, acting a- as a manufacturing company in this, in, in an emergency, uh, whether subject to an order of the government or not, um, the people who are actually running the organization would be your CEO and your CFO and, uh, the, the general counsel, and the employees, uh, of the organization who are on the, you know, on, doing the day-to-day work of the organization. All of them would be part of the ma- emergency management organization as, uh, carrying out the functions, the actual operations, uh, as opposed to the board of directors, which is, is going to be directing policy and issuing such resolutions as are necessary to carry out the business. So, in that sense, yes, everybody's part of the emergency management organization, but in terms of the actual operations, that's done by staff, uh, and, and with contractors and such volunteers as we may, um, accept. Uh, and we get volunteers that may be in the form of retirees, uh, maybe in the form of, uh, people who, uh, I don't know if we still even have the, the, uh, the program that, well, we have the CERT program, so it might be CERT volunteers who are a part of that. And once they have committed and volunteered, they are subject to the direction of the emergency services director. But they're all part of the organization. I think the, the question is, are they policymakers, or are they involved in day-to-day operations?
Yeah, that wasn't my question. My question wasn't that, and it got, it got all off on a tangent on that. All I was wondering is the definition of emergency management organization, which in the plain language of the statute doesn't talk about all those other things that you just talked about. So, I guess the answer, so to confirm, the answer is the city council is a member of the emergency management organization of the city of Costa Mesa, correct?
It is part of the, yes, it is part of the organization.
Okay, okay. Um, then as it relates for, as it relates to the emergency plan, now, I understand we have this two thousand thirteen plan, but, um, with, with each disaster, if you will, or emergency, whether it's an earthquake, a flood, a pandemic, we would need to prepare a, a separate plan for that particular emergency, right?
Uh, maybe, maybe not. In this case, um, a lot of the things that are already in our emergency operations plan are already being carried out exactly pursuant to the plan. Uh, there are some differences, perhaps, with respect to this pandemic, and we're looking at those, but each of the steps that is required to be carried out in terms of, um, determining day-to-day functions and roles of each department and each employee within that department, uh, succession and so on, that's all being carried out now to the, and we, as I know-
Okay, that's not my question. I have a very simple question. I'm sorry, I have a very simple question. It, it's not, I'm not asking about what's happening or not happening. I'm just asking if, as an example, in this certain, if the, in this circumstance, when we have a pandemic, part of our emergency plan from two thousand thirteen did not contemplate having to purchase two hundred and something thousand dollars worth of laptop computers and licensing and software because everybody had to work from home? We didn't ever expect anything quite like this, right? So, that had to become part of this crisis's emergency plan. So, my question is, this language in six dash eight, is the emergency plan that it's referring to relating back to the two thousand thirteen, or whenever we adopt a plan in the future? Or is it related to a specific emergency plan for a, a particular crisis?
I think I can, I think I can ask it up.
Okay. Ms. Farrell Harrison?
Thank you. Yes, the emergency plan that's referenced here is the city's emergency operations plan, which is the document that was adopted in two thousand thirteen. It's a very large plan that anticipates many different types of disasters, and it gives broad guidance as to what the operations would be and the kind of, um, incident command structure we should have and things of that nature. And so, the, the emergency plan that's here in the ordinance is the broad plan. It's not meant to be the specific plan.
Okay, so then that begs my next question, which is, we, in looking at that paragraph, section six dash six, paragraph A one, it, it contemplates that there'll be some kind of an emergency plan put together related to a local emergency that occurs. So, I guess I'm just wondering, where in the document or in the ordinance does it refer to whatever plan needs to be approved as to a particular emergency that's not the generic plan?
So, this ordinance does not do that? And I'm not aware of any ordinances that do do that, because generally, what you're asking is your emergency services director and the staff of the city develop the plans and implement them. As you would-
And I think, in conjunction with that, as I indicated, I think, uh, in this situation, we are, um, we are bringing to the council specific components of the plan that are necessary to effectuate council policy and to, um, try and ameliorate this emergency, which includes everything from the, uh, suspension of the thirty-day, uh, stay and, and some other things that are on your agenda tonight. Uh, but also, we'll be bringing forward some budget adjustments that are going to be necessary as a result of some of the emergency expenditures. Uh, and to the extent that we need to bring you any other specific components of the plan, we'll be doing that.
Okay, so I guess from my standpoint, and I know it's not going to change tonight, but it seems to me that after poring through this to try to understand how it works, it seems to me that what's missing is some type of a section that relates to a particular emergency that's not one that anybody could plan for, and how a plan for that emergency needs to get vetted and reviewed and, you know, transparently presented to the public and the city council. And so, that's the part that I think is missing from this. Um, I, I can't speak to whether or not this is model or not model, I don't know, but I feel like that part is missing, because this is a unique situation, and none of our plans contemplated it. And so, we obviously are creating new plans, but without some kind of a review requirement, it doesn't come before the council. Um, okay, uh, I'm going to open this item up to public comment. Is there any public comment related to this item?
No, Madam Mayor.
Okay, closed public comment, council. Is there anyone who wants to make a motion?
Move to approve staff's recommendation.
Is this Council, sorry, could you say your name, because I keep, I can barely hear you?
This is Councilmember Reynolds, move to approve staff's recommendation.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second? Marr, second?
Uh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Okay, councilman, motion by Councilmember Reynolds, seconded by Councilmember Marr. Call for the question by voice, voice vote.
Councilmember Reynolds?
Yes.
Councilmember Marr?
Yes.
Councilmember Mansour?
Yes.
Councilmember Guinness?
Yes.
Councilmember Chavez?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Stevens?
Yes.
Mayor Foley?
I vote yes, but I would like us to see what the plan is.
Motion carries seven, zero.
Moving to item number three.
Adopt Resolution Number Twenty Twenty, Ratifying Regulation Number Two Pursuant to Proclamation Number Twenty Twenty Dash O One, An Introduction of Ordinance Titled: An Ordinance of the City of Costa Mesa, California Relating to a Temporary Moratorium on Evicting Tenants. Presentation by Ms. Hall Barlow, City Attorney.
Good evening, members of the council, members of the public. Uh, what we have before you is a resolution that we are asking you to adopt that would ratify the dire, uh, the, uh, regulation issued by the Director of Emergency Services, uh, on April the first, which would, um, uh, in accordance with the Declaration of Local Emergency and in accordance with the authority granted by, uh, the, uh, Order of the State of California, uh, essentially impose a moratorium on, um, evictions for either commercial or residential tenants who are unable to pay their rent, uh, as a result of the COVID-19 crisis, uh, and that specific, specific due are requiring that they either have, uh, lost income as a result, or they've incurred extraordinary medical, um, expenses as a result. Uh, as a practical matter, um, we are, we are bringing forward an, uh, regu- uh, an ordinance, as well as the resolution approving, uh, this, so we are asking that you first adopt the resolution ratifying that regulation, and that you then introduce, uh, by title only, the ordinance, the regular ordinance, which would implement this, um, on a going-forward basis. Uh, I do want to make clear, because I know the question has come up from members of the public, that although it is a regular ordinance, um, it will, um, cease having effect in terms of, uh, stopping evictions and, and actions taken in accordance thereof after the declaration of emergency is over. Um, and I do want to add an additional, uh, fact, uh, that the, uh, court, um, judicial counsel issued an order yesterday that effectively is going to say, um, any, um, any evictions that are not necessary as a result of public health and safety. So, an eviction that is, an eviction that is, um, for example, initiated by a landlord because the people in the home are engaging in illegal activity, that eviction would be allowed to go forward. Other evictions, um, under the, um, the new order, uh, would not be allowed to go forward in the courts for a period of time. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, council, uh, Councilmember Reynolds, any questions?
No questions.
Councilwoman Chavez?
Nope.
Councilmember Marr?
Yeah, I'm just, maybe you can say that again, if that's what you just said, but I'm confused about, so when, when would this take effect?
The, the regulation that was adopted, uh, or enacted by the city manager took effect April first, on the day it was enacted. So, the first action we're asking to do is to ratify that action, which would leave it in effect, and then the ordinance itself, this is a regular ordinance, remember?
Got it, okay, okay. Yeah, sorry, I missed, I missed that when you said it. Okay, thank you, that was it.
All right.
Okay, uh, Councilmember Mansour?
Yes, thank you. Um, I don't know if it's so much of a question, but a, more of a, kind of, some comments and, um, and then if the city attorney can correct me at the end if I'm wrong. Um, but the way I understand the staff recommendation, and I, and I, I think you may have said this, but I just want to make sure it's correct in my own mind, uh, and for the public and for the sake of transparency, that based on the recommended action, it's, um, uh, ratifying what our city manager has put forward in her order or, or, or regulation, um, but then it's also the, the more, um, the regular ordinance, uh, which is temporary, but it's not the emergency ordinance. Tonight, uh, well, I guess what's, what's, what I wish I would have seen is on page two, uh, under analysis, uh, the second paragraph, where it says the city council considered an urgency ordinance, I think it, I wish it would have been more clear, and it would have clarified for the public that the city council voted on the ordinance, and it was, uh, it passed five to two, uh, but that wasn't four fifths, so what happened subsequent to that was the city manager, acting as the Director of Emergency Service, issued Regulation Number Two, which, which put it into effect, and that is mentioned in paragraph two. Um, and I, I think it's, it's important to say that that only, that happened because of, that that is, that is only able to take place because of the declaration, dec- declaration of an emergency, that the city manager can do that. Otherwise, uh, the four-fifth vote, or, or the five, the five to two vote would have, um, uh, failed because it would, in the sense that it wouldn't, it's not a four-fifth vote. Um, does, does that make sense, uh, Ms. Barlow? I just wanted to be very transparent on this.
Yes, uh, Councilmember, yes, Councilmember Mansour, that, that is correct.
Okay, thank you, thank you. I'm very grateful. I, I just wanted to be transparent for the public, uh, to, to see this. That's, that's all. Thank you so much.
Okay, um, Councilmember Guinness?
Yeah, I have several questions. Um, now, Governor Newsom issued Order Twenty Eight Twenty, and, um, that was a moratorium on evictions for commercial and residential, and then subsequently issued Executive Order Thirty Seven Twenty, um, and could staff kind of go over how the two, um, executive orders differ?
Yes, I'd be happy to do that. Madam Mayor, members of the council? Uh, the first order, uh, that the government issued, number Twenty Eight, uh, dash Twenty, authorized local jurisdictions to, um, include or provide- to include or provide for eviction moratoriums for both residential and commercial properties. It did not mandate those, and it did not establish any statewide moratoriums. The Executive Order number 37-20 imposed a statewide moratorium on residential eviction only, and it gave an, it did so by extending the period of time for tenants who had already been served with unlawful detainer for non-payment of rent to respond to complaints. It provides for tenants to notify landlords in writing before the rent is due or within seven days of their inability to pay or their need to delay payment because of the COVID-19 crisis, and it specifies similar provisions as our state, I mean, as our city proposal, which is that they could not work, they were laid off, lost hours, they missed work for childcare, or they experienced medical expenses related to COVID-19 that impaired their ability to pay rent. It precluded, it requires the tenant to maintain verifiable documentation similar to ours, and it precluded issuance of a writ of the eviction, basically, which would be served by the marshal or the sheriff's department and would actually require someone to move out. It carries on that order until May 31st unless it's extended. To be clear, it only applies to residential, it did not apply to commercial tenancies, and it does not extend the period of time after the conclusion of the emergency for tenants to repay the past due rent. So it differs from the city's regulation and proposed ordinance in those respects.
And is it, was that intended to supplement the original order or to replace it?
It only replaced it, that is, 37-20, only replaced 28-20 to the extent that they were inconsistent.
Okay, so the portion that referenced commercial properties was not replaced or eliminated?
It was not.
Okay, and then I have a question about the executive order. Now, the order, under the ordinance that we just passed, the order would be to make an issue rules and regulations on matters, this is the, that we could have local executive orders, "sincerely related to the protection of life and property as affected by such emergency." I see the argument on how residential would be affected, because obviously you put somebody on the street, they're more likely to have, end up in our ER. But I see an argument unrelated to our ordinance that, you know, that commercial tenants need some help, but how does this relate to the protection of life and property as it applies to commercial tenants?
I, my analysis of that, and I'm sure Ms. O'Harrison may have some thoughts as well, but is that in trying to protect essential businesses in particular, so that their employees can remain employed and remain safe, but also to protect those who are, have been ordered to close down, if people are, have been ordered to close down because they are deemed non-essential, but they cannot make their payments, and they decide that they're going to ignore that order and continue operating so that they can make their rent so that they can't be evicted, that is going to endanger the public health and safety, and that is the reason that we're recommending both.
Okay, and then what is the penalty for a landlord who does not adhere to this?
This would be, well, it's interesting because the state's courts on hold is probably going to prevent any violations or.
Well, it probably makes it moot anyway, but anyway.
Yeah. But as I recall, in looking at the ordinance, it would be a misdemeanor to violate it. But primarily, it would provide a dispens to a tenant in court who had not been able to pay their rent.
And as you mentioned, the courts are pretty well shut down for this purpose anyway. Is this all moot?
It's not moot, because we don't know when the courts will reopen, the rules are different, the court closure does not have anything to do with a time period for repayment, so no, it's not moot in our opinion.
Okay, page three of the, it's not the staff report, it's page three of the resolution where we have a whereas.
Yes.
Let's see, one, two, three, the fourth one down, there's a reference to Governor Newsom's executive orders, tenants, covered tenants, da-da-da-da-da, and then on the one, two, three, four, five, the fifth line, it says that order prevents residential landlords from enforcing any eviction writ during that effective date of that order. There isn't any qualification, whereas the previous lines of that paragraph do offer qualifications. Is that intended to mean that there would be no enforcement of any evictions, period, under this resolution, or was that intended to reference the evictions of those related to COVID-19, or those per tenants who were covered under the COVID-19 situation?
That references to the governor's order, and it is limited to writ, eviction, eviction writ due to failure to pay rent.
Related to, but related to the emergency, not just failure to pay rent, period?
That's correct.
Yeah, because the way it's worded, it sounds like we're putting a ban on any evictions at all. And I think that's all my questions for now. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Guinness. Mayor Potem Stevens, any questions?
Yeah, I mean, I don't know if these are questions, but just to address some of the issues that were discussed, just, yeah, as the city attorney said, just yesterday, the judicial council promulgated new rules of court, and just a few more details on that, under those rules of court, the court may not issue a summons and complaint. That means there can, they cannot pursue any type of unlawful detainer action unless there's a public health and safety issue and the discretion of the court. And that's the, just so the council knows, that's the summons, issuance of the summons and the complaint is what commences a case and attaches the jurisdiction of the court and allows them to grant relief, including, in this case, unlawful detainer. And then there's some other provisions, but it's important to, at the end, they have what they call the sunset of the rule, and it says the rule will remain in effect until 90 days after the governor declares the state of emergency related to the COVID pandemic is lifted. So, under the rule that was promulgated just yesterday, the, you cannot get a summons and complaint issued in a court in the state of California unless there's an issue of public safety or public health for 90 days after the governor listed the order. So, that, however, so first question, this is in the form of a question, am I right about that, city attorney?
Yes, sir, you are, that's, yes.
I am right, okay.
Madam Mayor, that is rule number one of the new order.
And it's rule number one, which means it's arguably the most important rule that was addressed by the Supreme Court and the judicial council of all of the issues that were being considered relating to COVID. And so then, but then the other, the other aspect that this, this rule does not cover, the rule of court doesn't cover, but our ordinance does, is that our ordinance precludes the issuance of a three-day notice to pay or quit, does it not?
Yes, sir, it does.
And isn't it true in your experience, the city attorney, that there are times when tenants, both residential or commercial, will receive a rather official-looking notice to pay or quit and will vacate the premises even if they're not forced to do so by a court of law?
That is correct, that happens a good deal of the time.
And that could create homelessness in the city of Costa Mesa, could it not?
Absolutely, that's the reason that we're bringing this forward.
Right, and it could create businesses that have been required to shut down because of the COVID crisis to shutter their doors and leave even though they haven't been forced to by an order of the court, correct?
That's correct.
All right, thank you, I have no further questions.
Okay, thank you. At this time, I'll open this item up for public comment. Ms. Green, did we receive any public comments related to this item?
Yes, we have received one from Mary Spadoni. "In reading the material provided by the city regarding the stopping of evictions renters' options, I was disappointed that the council completely disregarded the ma and pop landlords that own under four units. Our city is 64% rentals, a larger percentage than even Los Angeles. The larger rental complexes owned and operated by corporate-type of operations should not be lumped in the same action as owners that are using the rents to maintain property, pay property tax, and pulling some income to offset their retirement. Some of these small landlords inherited property or worked diligently to secure for their golden years, probably never thinking big brother would literally rip food from their mouths to offset this pandemic. To give to one group while taking from an owner of a few units is just wrong. I'm requesting that you update and not include these small, local landlords with rental units under four in your action. Be safe." That concludes the public comments.
Thank you. Ms. Barlow, under the governor's order and under the judicial council for, judicial council rule, is that an option that the council has at this time?
The ownership, whether it's small or corporate, is completely insignificant under the governor's order and under the judicial council rule.
Okay. Could I have a comment, council, is there a motion?
This is Mar, I moved for Stevens.
Okay.
Reynolds.
Okay, I'm going to go with Mayor Potem Stevens. Did you have a motion?
Mar, second.
Yeah, I moved to approve the item.
Hold on, there isn't a motion yet. Okay, and Councilmember Reynolds?
I moved.
Councilmember?
I moved to approve the recommendation.
Councilmember Reynolds, did you move a second?
Sure.
Okay. I thought that's what I heard, sorry.
It was Mar over and over again, but it's okay, I think I seconded something. Give it to Mar.
Okay, well, if you guys could announce your names, all of them before you speak, so I can know who it is, it's hard, I can barely hear you. Okay, Councilmember Mar is the second. All for the question. Ms. Green?
All right, Councilmember Reynolds?
Yes.
Councilmember Mar?
Yes.
Councilmember Mansour?
No.
Councilmember Guinness?
Um, yeah, and I have some comments too, we didn't ask for discussion or comments, so I'm going to take this opportunity to make some comments. Yes, I sympathize with people who are behind the eight ball on their rent, whether they're commercial tenants or residential tenants. But, you know, it's easy to be generous at someone else's expense. We're taking from one to give to another. It's even been said this is a lifeline for some tenants. Well, guess what, we're giving that lifeline to the tenants by tearing that lifeline out of the hands of some of these small landlords. We have landlords who scrimped and saved for years and years, and this is their retirement plan, their only retirement plan, because they're not getting a pension, they may get some minor amount of social security, but this is their retirement plan, and we just are destroying their retirement plan for months on end. And they may have an old mortgage with a not very high mortgage even, but they have taxes. Nobody wa, the taxes, they're doing three days and they're still doing three days for those who haven't paid them. They still have utilities, some of these smaller complexes aren't separately metered, so they actually are carrying the utilities for their tenants then. They still have to pay insurance, they still have to pay for trash collection if they're not in a small enough area where the trash is collected as part of the normal thing. What we're looking at here is a massive asset transfer, possibly one of the most massive asset transfers that have occurred since 1930, and not in the USVA either. It may be said that it's done for the greater good, but when we do that, when we have an asset transfer for the greater good, it's called a tax. It's a tax that goes before the voters. The Constitution of the State of California requires that taxes go before the voters. What we are doing is taxing a lot of our smaller landlords, including, we may have small landlords who are renting commercial properties to multinational corporations, and guess what? You think the small landlord is going to be able to fight that multinational? I don't think so. And so I will be voting no. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Green?
Wait.
No, Ms., let's finish voting and then you can make a comment. Ms. Green, can you continue the voting, please?
Okay. Councilmember Chavez?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Stevens?
Well, I obviously support the motion, but it's a good time for me to make a comment since I've got the floor.
Can we just, can we hold on a minute, Mayor Potem? Let's vote, and then I'll go through and everyone can make their comments. Can you just vote at the same?
Okay, but I do, I get to go first since I made the motion?
Yes.
All right, then my, in that case, I'll vote yes.
Okay.
Mayor Foley?
Yes, okay. Mayor Potem Stevens, and then Councilmember Mar, and then I think I heard that Councilmember Mansour wanted to say something, but I'm not sure.
Let me, Madam Mayor, can, I'm just, motion carries five to Councilmembers Mansour and Guinness voting no.
My apologies, under this process, I forgot to open it up to comment before the vote.
Okay.
Are you ready? Are you there?
Yeah, I'm ready, I was born ready. So, hey, so listen, so we're not ripping food from anyone's mouth, we're not doing a massive asset transfer, as has been said in the public comment and by Councilmember Guinness. What we're trying to do is prevent homelessness and prevent businesses that have complied with a government order to keep our community safe and healthy and prevent sickness and death from losing their business and from being on the streets and creating community spread of the COVID virus in our community. It is, what we're doing is consistent with what the governor said, it's consistent with what the judicial council has said, and if we don't do this, it will be entirely irresponsible, it would be against public safety, public health, and life, and we are not transferring anything. It does, it is absolutely ridiculous. In order to qualify for the eviction moratorium of the city of Costa Mesa, you have to establish that you have either, have substantially reduced revenue from the COVID virus or substantially increased expenses. The city of Costa Mesa and the council members that vote on this are not transferring wealth, are not preferring anybody, because if you cannot make your rent because of COVID, you can't make your rent. And all of the mom-pop people that own their businesses or own their property, if they, you know, whatever, if they plan, however they plan for their retirement, it's none of my business, but the point of the matter is, we're not preventing them from getting income. The COVID virus is preventing them from getting income by virtue of our very ordinance. So it is absolutely ridiculous to say that the city council is transferring any wealth to anyone. COVID is taking away the wealth. COVID is taking away the wealth by preventing the tenants from paying those. by preventing the tenants from paying those landlords. The only rational, compassionate, intelligent vote is to vote yes on this. And I'm sorry, I gotta say it, you, if you don't fight, vote yes, then it goes against everything we're doing in terms of keeping our community safe.
Thank you, Mayor Potem. Um, Councilmember Mar, did you want to speak to the motion?
Yeah, I would just add to that, one of the things that was left out of the conversation previously are all of the steps that the governor has taken to work with banks and with mortgage companies in order to also defer mortgages. So that's the case for me. We own a property. We are able to defer the mortgage by three months if we need to, that jibe with, um, what's going on at the tenant level. And so the, the idea that now all those people have to, um, single-handedly come up with mortgages is simply not true in a lot of cases. Um, I think this is absolutely the compassionate thing to do. As we were reminded, sixty percent of the population rents. Um, this is the vast majority of Costa Masons who are impacted by this, and it's also the Costa Masons of least means who are impacted the hardest. And so I think we have a moral obligation to care for everyone in the city. Um, but we also have a moral obligation to provide, uh, a, a means by which people cannot fall so low that they do not have a home to shelter in anymore. So I'm proud to support the motion.
Thank you, Councilmember Mar. Uh, did anyone else wish to speak to the motion who has not spoken yet?
Yeah, this is, uh, Alan Mansour. Um, so, yeah, I, you know, hey, we, we all want what's best for the people in our community. And I, I di- I disagree with what Councilmember Stevens said that this, you know, I don't, I don't remember your exact words, but goes against wanting to helping people essentially. And that, that's just absolutely not true. There are always unintended consequences to, to government action, and, you know, we all want to be compassionate, but I, I don't think it's fair to, to the smaller mom-and-pop landlords. I think it's best if they work it out with their tenants themselves, um, and, and without too much interference. And like I said, it's the unintended consequences that concern me. I think most people will work it out with their, with their, um, with their tenants and the landlords together, but, um, I, I, I cannot support this. Thank you.
Chavez.
Thank you. Councilmember Chavez?
Yeah, um, thank you, Madam Mayor. I think that phrase, unintended consequences, is a really good phrase, because the unintended consequence of not doing this ordinance would be multiple people, um, losing their apartments and going in the streets during this rough time. Um, I think it would be a very fair ordinance, the fact that tenants who to choose, and choose, who has to take this action because of loss of income, um, is going to be paid back at the end of the time due. You know, we're not taking away income because they don't have jobs right now. So if people, if people can't pay for their rent, there's nothing to begin with. And more importantly, we're actually giving landlords opportunity to get that rent back once the economy is up and rolling again. So I think the unintended arg- unintended consequence argument really goes through, why would you be testing this ordinance? So I'm voting yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Reynolds, did you have anything else you want to add?
Um, I'll just add that, you know, that it's a national direction at this point that for the health and safety of every American, we need to stay home. This is the most important action we can take to allow people to stay home.
Thank you. I echo those, uh, comments by the people who are supporting the motion. I'll be supporting the motion, and i- in fact, it is a national effort. Um, Dr. Brick, this week told the country, I think today and yesterday, not even to go to the grocery store because of the pandemic and that this week is a critical time. It is critical that we protect the overall community. Um, this is not a transfer of wealth. In fact, this protects the landlords because we are requiring that any rent payments that are not paid during the time of the moratorium, that those payments must ultimately be paid. So it definitely is not a tax, because the landlord is going to be getting their pay and will be entitled to their rent. It's not a, uh, transfer of wealth of any kind. It's just a deferral. And as it relates to what's available to help mom-and-pop, uh, property owners, there are a lot of resources available to them that are not available to tenants who are working, uh, hourly jobs making less than twenty dollars an hour. There are small business loans that are available, where people can have their, um, expenses forgiven, depending on the type of business. Uh, there are, um, utility deferrals. No utility companies that I'm aware of, uh, whether it is Edison, whether it is, uh, SoCal Gas or, uh, Mesa Water, no one is getting their utilities turned off. And in fact, the utility companies are working with, uh, property owners to make sure that, that those payments that can't be paid because the tenant isn't paying, that they're not burdened with still having to pay them. So there's a lot of, of resources available, all the way down the ladder. Um, and I agree. I think it's a moral obligation that we have to protect people and to shelter people and to relieve some of the stress on people at this very, very stressful time. I mean, some individuals who contacted me are people who were working two jobs and, you know, going to school, and now they can't work, they can't do anything, they can't pay their rent, they're having anxiety. It's a very, very stressful time. And if we can relieve one tiny little bit of the stress for just a period of time, then I think that we're doing our job to protect the safety and the quality of our community. I know that many of us are working very hard, uh, with our congressional and our state leadership to try to get some relief for all the different levels of people impacted by COVID-19. But this is not a, a situation that any tenant caused. It is a situation that was forced upon them by something raging through our community that no one could have anticipated. So I'll proudly be supporting the motion. I appreciate the efforts of those who, um, are working to protect the, the homes of our community. Call for the questions. Actually, Mayor Foley did the authority.
I think we did, right?
It was a true lie. Oh, already voted. That's right. Sorry. Okay.
No worries.
But now we will move to item number four.
Thank you. This is introduction of regular ordinance titled, "An Ordinance of the City of Costa Mesa, California Establishing a Temporary Suspension of Costa Mesa Municipal Code Section thirteen dash one seven four as to short-term occupancy motels, which are restricted to allowing stays of no longer than thirty consecutive days due to the impacts of the novel coronavirus disease." Thank you. Presentation by Ms. Hall Barlow, city attorney.
Ms. Hall Barlow?
Yes, thank you, mayor and members of the council. Um, this is a regular ordinance that, uh, follows the approval by the city council on March twenty-fourth of an urgency ordinance temporarily suspending the thirty-day, um, day limitation for our motels that are not already considered long-term stay. Uh, in your prior action, you approved the urgency ordinance, and you directed the, um, the matter to be returned to the planning commission for consideration and, uh, recommendation to the city council with respect to, uh, the continuance of that, uh, restriction, as in the thirty-day restriction. Uh, so staff is working on that. Uh, but this ordinance will simply, uh, put the regular ordinance into place for the duration of the emergency and until the council, uh, acts on that ultimate recommendation from, uh, the city, uh, planning commission. Uh, so I'm happy to answer any questions, and our recommendation is to, um, move forward and introduce the regular ordinance.
Thank you. Councilmember Reynolds, any questions?
No questions.
Councilwoman Chavez?
Nope.
Councilwoman Mar?
No questions.
Councilwoman Mansour?
No.
Councilwoman Guinness?
None.
Mayor Potem Stevens?
No.
I have no questions. Can we open this item up for public comment? Ms. Green, did we receive any public comments related to this item?
Madam Mayor, no, we did not.
Okay. Close of public comment. Council, if you could state your name, and I'll recognize you for a motion.
Reynolds, move the recommended, the staff recommendation.
Chavez, second.
Okay. Motion by Reynolds, second by Chavez. Uh, Councilor Reynolds, do you want to speak to the motion?
Um, no. Again, this is an action to help keep people housed through this crisis.
Councilwoman Chavez, would you like to speak to the motion?
I'm fine. Um-
Okay. Councilmember Mar, did you want to speak to the motion?
No, ma'am.
Councilwoman Mansour?
No, I'm good. Thank you.
Councilwoman Guinness?
Nope.
Mayor Potem Stevens?
No, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Ms. Green, can you call for the question by voice vote?
Councilmember Reynolds?
Yes.
Councilmember Mar?
Yes.
Councilmember Mansour?
Yes.
Councilmember Guinness?
Yes.
Councilmember Chavez?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Stevens?
Yes.
Mayor Foley?
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero.
Okay, moving to item number five.
Authorization to explore partnership with the Orange County Inland Empire Small Business Development Center Network. Presentation by Ms. Farrell Harrison, city manager.
Ms. Farrell Harrison? Thank you. Um, this item we're bringing forward is regarding, uh, a potential partnership with the Orange County Inland Empire Small Business Development Center Network. This is being brought forward so that we could have yet another tool in our toolbox as it relates to trying to stabilize the economy, helping small businesses to thrive or at least survive during the pandemic, and trying to exhaust all possible options for giving small businesses some, uh, technical assistance, some access to loans and financial information and financial resources during this time, and basically just one more way that we could try to help small businesses. Um, Councilmember Mar, uh, wanted us to bring this forward, and so I, I'd like to offer her the opportunity as well to speak to this item. But I don't see a downside for us to pursue a potential partnership in order to help our businesses, um, stabilize and have the resources that they need to continue operating during this difficult time.
Councilmember Mar, did you want to speak to the item?
Yes, please. Um, thank you for letting me speak. Um, I wanted to bring this forward to get council's approval before I asked staff to spend more time on it, given, um, how busy things are right now at city hall. The local Small Business Development Center has an opportunity to create a city loan program. They did something similar in Garden Grove, where they were able to find philanthropic dollars to match general fund dollars. So the city did put up some funding, but that also allowed them to control who was lent to. And so this is outside of the Small Business Administration loan programs that you've been hearing about over the last, uh, week. This would essentially allow us to start our own, um, within the city. And that also means that we would have tighter controls ourselves over exactly what all the parameters would be, um, to accommodate that lending. One of the reasons I wanted it on this agenda is because, um, those philanthropic dollars are not going to be limitless. So we know for a fact that Wells Fargo had significant dollars. They were willing to invest in Orange County, um, as match loans with city funding. I'm not sure that those are available anymore, just because of the overall demand existed, um, on them for, for greater lending capacity right now. Um, and so what I'd like to do is I'd like to, I don't have a dollar amount in mind. We're not specifically asking for general fund dollars, but I'd like to allow the city manager to explore that partnership and what a program might look like, um, and then bring it back with some more details for council approval.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Reynolds, did you have any questions?
No questions.
Councilwoman Chavez?
None.
Councilmember Mansour?
No.
Councilwoman Guinness?
No questions. Just want to thank Councilmember Mar for bringing this forward.
Mayor Potem Stevens?
Uh, no questions.
Okay. Uh, yeah, thank you. It's great to see that, um, you know, I know we're all committed to trying with, from this, I appreciate the work that Councilwoman Mar and Mayor Potem Stevens are doing to advance smart, well-reasoned proposals, and working with our regional partners. Of course, the Small Business Administration, those regional partners, that is very beneficial. Um, and I hope that we can move forward in something, uh, like this. Uh, I, I do have a question as it relates to our motion that we approved at the last meeting with regard to the disaster relief fund. Would this be something that would be folded into that as well so that we would have a whole penalty of, of opportunities for relief efforts throughout the city?
I think that, this is the city manager, I think that we could pursue that on a parallel track if we explore the partnership, also look to see how the disaster relief program, when we bring that forward, could tie in. So I think that there's a good nexus in, um, those two operations. They could go on parallel tracks and also, um, be involved, um, in the disaster relief program overall strategy.
All right. Uh, I'll open this item up for public comment. Do we have any members of the public who wish to speak to this item, Ms. Green?
Uh, yes, Madam Mayor, we have one. Um, from Hoing LP. "Thanks to the city for the many emergency efforts on COVID-19. Yes, it's vital to save mom-and-pops, particularly the restaurants. They're some of the most hard-working people and an essential part of local culture. If they go down, big chains will move into the spaces to erase the community's unique with uniqueness." On three twenty-seven, an LA Times article on restaurants wrote, "Every day that help is stalled, it gets exponentially worse. As the Agenda report shows, local programs may be more direct and potentially faster than the Fed relief. I'd like to suggest two small actions. One, partner with the chamber for a citywide fundraiser for hundred-and-fifteen thousand eight-hundred-and-thirty dollars. The theory is that every resident contributes one dollar. The intent is to build community support for mom-and-pops, which may serve as a reminder of buy-local. Two, adopt a food-wear-serve-on-request policy to reduce the cost of each takeout. You may have read in Daily Pilot about Newport's voluntary program. Recently, an ordinance was drafted. It could be a short chapter in CMCC, CMMC Title VIII Health and Sanitation. The core text could be 'single-use reduction.' Food vendors shall only provide utensils, chopsticks, straws, lid plugs, condiment packets, napkins, and cup sleeves to customers upon request. And then, 'How can I help? Thanks.'" That concludes public comments.
Thank you. We'll close the public comment. Councilwoman Mar, did you want to make a motion?
I move to approve the item.
Okay, second?
Reynolds, second.
Um, motion by Mar, second by Foley. If you, uh, want to speak to the motion, Councilwoman Mar?
Uh, no, just thank you to council support for this.
Okay. Um, and I've already said my comments. Great job. Also, any other comments by any other council member? Councilmember Reynolds?
No comment.
Councilwoman Chavez?
This is really good.
Councilwoman Mansour?
No comment.
Councilwoman Guinness?
No.
Mayor Potem Stevens?
Oops, no, it's a good idea. Thank you for the mo- thank you for the, uh, staff report.
Okay, call for the, uh, call for the questions by voice vote.
Councilmember Chavez?
Yes.
Councilmember Guinness?
Yes.
Councilmember Mansour?
Yes.
Councilmember Mar?
Yes.
Councilmember Reynolds?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Stevens?
Yes.
Mayor Foley?
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero.
Okay. Uh, at this time, we will inter- conditional council committee report, comments, and suggestions. Uh, Councilmember Reynolds, did you have anything additional?
Nothing additional tonight.
Okay. Councilmember Chavez?
Thank you, all the staff who came in person today. We appreciate you.
Thank you. Councilmember Mar?
I'm good. Thank you.
is going to post those. Uh, if you want to get text alerts every day from the Orange County Public Health, you can, uh, go to the Orange County Public Health, um, text OC-COVID-19 to the number eight 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 seven seven seven. And that's the way that you could receive a update every day on what's happening in the, the number of cases, as well as other, um, helpful information that the county public health is putting out. Additionally, I know there's been some individuals who are struggling and want to find out where they can get, um, food, and if, you could put up the next slide. The Second Harvest Food Bank has a pop-up drive-through food distribution. There will be one on this Saturday, April eleventh, and it's at the Honda Center parking lot. There are no walk-ups, it's just drive-through, it's from nine to noon, and you can go there, and you can, um, get food if you are, uh, struggling right now to be able to buy groceries. Additionally, if you're a senior and you live in Costa Mesa, we have our city staff are calling all of our seniors on our senior center list, and there are, uh, uh, opportunities to have meals delivered to you, or you can pick it up at the senior center. And also, Councilmember Chavez and I are working with some volunteers, and we're trying to call as many of our seniors as possible in the community. Um, there's a hotline for the city if you need help and you want to find out about resources and you don't have online access, you can call seven one four seven five four five one five six. That's on the overhead right now. Uh, that's our city hotline. There's a state hotline that you can call for greater information, eight three three five four four two three seven four. Most importantly, please stay home, it saves lives. Thank you, and good night. Happy Easter, everyone.